Good evening and welcome to the Proctor Select Board, October 27th Select Board Meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business would be to review and approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I hope this is recorded. Yeah, it says it is, okay. A motion would be in order to approve the October 14th minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment.
Yeah, I just have one thing on Giffey Park, I'm concerned with the ETO and I kind of chair Race Direct, our annual color run, and I'm just coming back again this year to ask if it's okay with you that we use the park and use the streets again. I do have our map that hasn't changed in the last few years, if you guys want to review it, but just looking for approval. We don't shut down any of the streets. Judy's been kind enough to let the Sheriff's Department know in the past just to kind of slow traffic down over the bridge, because we kind of stay on this side of the bridges to avoid a lot of traffic, so. That's if you guys want to see the maps or not.
When does that happen?
It's, I'm sorry, May 2nd. It's a Saturday. We also have a rain date of May 9th, which is the following week, and that's going to be rain or shine if it happens to rain again like it did last year, so.
That's good, it's okay.
Yeah, so.
We don't have it on the agenda tonight, so what we'll do is put it on the Agenda for Action for the next meeting, and if you wanted to just leave the map, that way we can give it to Judy and then we can just, when it gets closer. Do you need it back?
No, I've got several.
Okay, just so we have one and then we can share it with the sheriff.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions for me?
Nope.
Yeah, we don't close down any of the streets. It's open course, as they call it.
Okay. All right, everyone's had an opportunity to sign the warrants.
Yes.
So, fire department air pack purchase. You should have had, you have in your packet the quotes, and Josh is here. If you have any questions or to tell us which pack they're interested in.
We are actually looking at Scott, which is actually the lesser of the two quotes. It's a tried and true product that we've been using. The unfortunate part is nowadays bottles last 15 years, and at that point they are no good. And we've reached that point that we have to have new ones in place for next year.
No, I was just going to say, Madam Chair, that we should listen to that point, what he said there about the tanks reaching their expiration date in that because the town of Proctor in 2021 adopted the purchasing policy, and the purchasing policy says that for anything over $20,000, it has to be done by sealed bids, you know, and we don't have any sealed bids, or we didn't use a sealed bid process.
Right.
You know, where you've got theirs, but there's a clause in that policy that says if it's an emergency, then we can take that into consideration. And if it's a situation where it might impede the service that's being provided to the town of Proctor, and a firefighter with no protective breathing is not going to be able to provide any internal service to the town of Proctor. So we may, I don't know, I'll ask you, Madam Chair, if it's okay, if, you know, if we do use that as our authority to circumvent that policy about where it requires sealed bids for anything.
Well, I don't think these bids were shared with one another. Josh just got them and submitted them to Judy. The reason they're not sealed, I guess, is because of the depth of information for them. So, they weren't shared with anyone else, so for all intensive purposes, they could be considered a sealed bid. We can talk about both bids if you want. There's...
No, I'm happy with, you know, I think the...
Yeah, I just, I don't think that we circumvented the policy. I think that usually the sealed bids, as long as the bids aren't shared and made public prior to coming to us, that falls within that. And so, yeah, and Josh was in last week when I was here and said that he would just be submitting the bids to Judy, and then Judy provided them to us, so. Unless the group of you got on the horn and shared the bids with someone.
No, that is it, but I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so, they were just prepared this way so they're easier for you to, for you to look at, and so that you had some information about what it was that they were asking for, rather than, because not everyone has the depth of knowledge about what fire department equipment is. So that was the other reason they were in your packets in this manner.
No, thank you for giving us that information.
The main difference between the two is the MSA is using their proprietary rechargeable battery system, where instead of the Scott uses regular AA batteries and AAA batteries to run the functions that we replace every six months. The downfall is listening to other departments in regards to how the MSAs are holding up in true service. It's, it is not what they promised, and I can't justify the extra money for it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable. That should be your decision, department decision.
And I did include in the back of the packet a budget breakdown out of the line of, of...
Yes.
And we are not overspending at all for that, we are staying within budget.
So, the amount we're talking about is $133,730. So that would leave a balance of $3909 in the Equipment Reserve Fund. Any other questions for Josh? How long does it take to get them in once you order them?
Three to six months. That's why we're trying to plan ahead. It's not like the truck where if it comes in a month after the fact, we still have another truck that we can use. The minute the bottles expire, no one will fill them. So if we use them up, there is no replacement bottles to put back in the truck.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, no, I was just going to ask if you needed a motion.
I do need a motion.
I would like to make a motion in that they go ahead, the fire department go ahead and purchase the Scott air packs for purchase price of $133, I mean, $133,730.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now it's just on to fundraising with only $3,900 in there.
We are going to be doing that, something for the board is, we are going to be doing a benefit fundraiser for one of our members going through significant health concerns right now. We're tentatively looking at November 8th. Once we get approval on the venue, I will forward all the information over to the town.
Okay.
We would appreciate it if the town could share the Facebook posts.
Of course.
Let's help get the word out.
Sure, absolutely. If you share it with Judy, then she can share it out to different, oh, we can do that. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. All right, moving on, propane bid selection. So we opened sealed propane bids last meeting, and there were some questions about the tanks. And so Judy put together the bids, the tank replacement, and then you start. So you have that in your packet. So what is the pleasure? Yes?
Just one question, Lisa.
Yep.
That, that tank replacement, $300, that's $300 per tank? Or that's $300 for the tanks that we have?
I think when we talked last time, the cost was per tank.
Okay.
So, but I, yeah, so I didn't think that Suburban needed to change the tanks from the last time when we talked. I thought it was just Marcel at the time, but...
Who currently owns the tanks?
I thought Procter Gas currently owns the tanks.
That's what I was thinking, it was Procter Gas.
Yeah. Because that's who's had the bid, so.
Yeah, because the difference in price, you know, at 4,000 gallons is 7,600 for Procter Gas and 6,520 for Suburban.
Right.
But if we have to replace four tanks, you know...
I, I don't think we have four tanks. We have a tank yet, is there a tank at the fire department?
It's a buried in the ground tank.
Yeah, so, I, I think the tank would only be where, at the...
I don't know if the...
Garage?
Our pump station generators, are they propane?
Not sure.
Yeah, me either.
So...
Which station, because I know they have it portable, they drive to a lot of stations.
Well, like the park station or the library like that, so. I thought they were electric stations, I didn't think they had propane.
Yeah, that, you know, if we lose power, well, they have to have some auxiliary power to...
Right, that's why we have that generator thing that we drive around.
Yeah, it's that little line, they go back and...
Yeah, so I don't think those are, I mean, if you want, we can wait till Judy comes back. This isn't life or death. I mean, we could do it next month.
We don't have to speculate.
Yeah, so we can, we could table it till the town manager is here just to answer the question around tanks, right?
Right, yes, yes. You know, and the other question would be, say it is Suburban and we have only two tanks we have to replace, so it'll be $600. So they would, the bid would still be under, you know, the current. You know, if going forward, do you think this price, this price would be based on the fact that they know they have to change tanks? Or if they know they don't have to change tanks, might they adjust that price a little?
Honestly, I don't think we have, this, first of all, I think this is the most bids you've had for propane in a while, because I think Procter Gas is usually the only one that bids on it. I don't, I don't even know if Marcel has bid on propane in the past, to be honest. So, yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's a good question, if...
You know, I don't know if we look beyond this year, or we just look, when we're looking at bids, we just look at this year and say, okay, this is the cheapest and that's who we're going to go with, or...
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question, if every year you're going to pay a price to change tanks, which seems kind of silly.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there an option to purchase the tanks, so that way the tanks which...
Yeah, I don't know, and I don't know the size of the tanks, if that is a...
And I don't know the hydrostatic testing though, Josh, I mean, is...
Our buried one, I believe, is purchased.
Yeah, I would think if it's buried, it probably is.
I think there may be an option to purchase the tanks and have whoever's servicing them fulfilling verified dates and all that on.
Yeah, I think just because we've always been with Procter Gas, I mean, I don't know if you go back, if you've been with anybody else for a very long time, that, that's just kind of been a, you know, not even an issue, I guess. So, but we can, I can leave that for Judy and have her look into if you can purchase the tank, and then, yeah, I guess, if you could purchase that tank, that would answer, and I guess the number of tanks, right?
Yes, yes. Those three tanks are over Procter Gas's price.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll wait and get that information. Okay. And then the other, the next quote you have in your packet is the loader for Public Works. So this has been a conversation ongoing for, I don't know, probably two or three years, I guess, maybe longer than that. The loader's pretty old, and I'm not sure, I think it, I don't know, I don't even know if it's a 2000 model, I think it might be older than that.
Yes, I believe it.
So that's the one piece of equipment that the guys really are looking to replace, that that's a piece of equipment they use for lots of different things. So, that quote is in your packet. And we don't have to necessarily make a question, a decision tonight. If you have questions, if you want Kyle to come in to the next meeting and talk about, you know, why this, the John Deere one, or if you want to give them authority to move forward. There's money, I think, in the sinking fund, in the replacement fund. So, and they said that they wanted the, the John Deere one, wasn't it?
The John Deere, yes.
So I don't know, do you have questions about it? Because questions I'm not going to be able to answer off the load, I can assure you that.
When we look at the CAT versus, you know, the John Deere, I think the, the John Deere was 5,000 less.
Right.
But, but then the question would be, you know, about, you know, the servicing. I don't know scheduled maintenance, if you have to truck those to the dealership to get them for maintenance, or is maintenance done on site? Or do we do the maintenance?
Um, it depends on, yeah, the warranty.
And I don't know with the two different models, you know, the schedule of frequency of those.
So that seems like, if, if those are the depth of questions, then I think we could have Kyle come in and talk, so.
And, you know, the, the John Deere's got more horsepower, so, you know, it makes you think that it's going to use more energy to run it.
Sure.
You know, and then it's not like looking at miles per gallon, because, you know, this is running time, so I don't know how they compare.
So I think it would be a good idea if you, those are like kind of the depth of questions that you have, that you send those to Judy, she could share those with Kyle. So that when he comes, he has some expectation of what those questions are. Okay, but just so he can come and be prepared to answer the difference in the two, I think that would be fair to him. And then we'll just invite him and put him at the top of the November schedule, because we're going to start looking at budget, so we want to kind of try to start focusing on, on budget conversations, but this is an important item to discuss and get ordered. So I, I don't have an issue inviting him and having him come and speak at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and so I would just send those questions to Judy, or if anybody else has any other questions. And then she can share those with Kyle. All right, and then you have the traffic ordinance in your packet.
Yeah, it's nice to see that list has been straightened out. Wow, they, you know, there's just a couple of questions, but...
Yeah, so, so she highlighted and read the things that are...
Just before Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Lisa. Just before Josh leaves, I was just going to ask him, because that, one of the things I was going to ask, you know, the board to consider is that strip next to this Park Street tennis court as a no parking zone, you know, just on that one side of the street, because I know I've come onto Grove and turned onto Park, and they've been double parked on both sides, and it's tough, you know, on my truck to make that turn. And I was just going to ask Josh about the fire trucks. If, if it would be nice if we could have that one side by the...
We are not getting down it, and anything down that street, that corner is the primary hydrant we use. One side or the other should be posted for no parking.
The hydrant on the Grove Street side, or on the...
Grove Street.
Okay, on the Grove Street side.
Yeah.
But we're going to hook that in, if we're going to the high school or a house, we're going to lay right in from that hydrant, and if the trucks don't come in, we're going to have to come back from the other side.
And that's just the same problem on Holden, by Holden, you've got the same issue.
So we went through this conversation multiple times.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm saying keep the parking on, on the...
The west side?
The west side, yes.
And also on the east side hill, which is grass to begin.
Yeah, keep that, you know, just no parking from the entrance to the high school to intersection with Grove, just that one side, no parking.
Just the tennis court area.
Just the tennis court area, just so they can make the turn, lay their line, and come in, you know, and be wherever they had to.
So no parking...
And that's only four vehicles, Lisa, or five vehicles maybe, but they park... Yeah, they park right up to the intersection and adjust. There are just no way they're going to turn in on that. And, you know, it would be nice if we could just have that one section, because then they have access to the school, to the houses on the street, and...
I mean, the sad part is, I mean, we're, the primary response ladder that's going to be going to a call in that neighborhood, it's 36 and a half feet long, quarter foot wide stretch. So you're, you put cars in there and it's, you're not making it.
Yeah. I mean, the same could be said on just about every side street that doesn't have, that allows parking and you have some kind of event and it happens. I'm not debating it, I'm just saying, like, I mean, that same, that same issue can be put on every...
You're right.
On, on every side street. And that's a white street compared to many streets.
But that's also why we're saying if they parked on the west side still, they'd still have it.
I'm probably, it's just from the, from the driveway to the stop sign on the, on the... Yeah, on the tennis court side.
That's the only place that you, you have issues.
Because you could still park then down, um, um, not Orange Beach.
On the Southland.
Yeah, or what the heck is that street?
Olympus.
Olympus, yeah, 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 you could still park there.
You still could park there, and, you know, the skating rink parking lot.
Yeah, well, it's not so fun to park over there when you got a traipse through snow, they got...
Some of them do a lot, some of them do a parking lot, you know.
I don't know, that's debatable, everybody uses that as a parking lot now. Okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you for saying.
Thank you.
So you want to make that change in this document before you adopt it, because...
Well, I think there's a few other changes we have to make yet before we can adopt it.
Okay, so let's have those, because if we want to adopt this before we get into bad weather, there's a timeframe here, so that's the goal. So what are the other issues?
You know, on, on page one, you know, where it has the amendment date, you know, they will of course have the new date of when we adopt it again, so that will have to get added.
Right, but because we haven't done it, didn't get signed.
That's right, that's right, that's why I'm going to, but no, if you look at the index, the second page, it's not page two, but it's the index, we still have two Article Fours, Article 8 and Article 10. They're still Article 4 in between it, they should be Article 9.
Oh, okay.
You know, and then we added, because it wasn't there, we added the stop sign that was on Reynolds. We added the stop sign that's on Terrace Hill, and we added the stop sign that's in front of West Street Market on, on West Street, in front of Sinkus's house, Sinkowitz's house. You know, so we added three stop signs, and what that did is kind of pushed some of the articles onto different pages, so Article...
Well, that, that's just formatting, I'm not freaked out about that. If there, I mean, to me, that formatting is, is how it's going to be in its final format, not worried about that. If there are substantive changes that need to be made, that's what I want to look at, because until, I mean, if you have other changes, you're talking about formatting now isn't going to be helpful.
Okay.
So are there other...
Yeah, page four.
Okay.
You know, the AA is towards the bottom. Town Highway number 56, South Street.
Yep.
You know, that's South Street Extension.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, and that was marked on the last highlight, but I think she was thinking I was talking about, because I didn't include Old Route 3, and she said, well, that's how it used to be referred, so. So that is South Street Extension. And then when you're on S, the one above it, you know, Town Highway number 25, School Street, intersection with Town Highway 26, Gibb Street, you know, at the blinking light at the elementary school, that is a stop sign, but there's a stop sign in both directions. You know, so I don't know if you want to put both directions or two places, where, that's, that's the method that we use in other places here when there's multiple stop sign, we'll say east or west, north or south, or three places, you know, so. So, so we, we have the one that's on the...
So what if we just say two-way stop?
Yes, two-way, yes, that would do it.
Okay. Okay, what else?
And then K and L, you know, see K? Beaver Pond Road intersection with Town Highway 52, West Street.
Yep.
There's a three-way stop sign right there now.
Yeah.
And...
That's what it says.
Yeah, yeah, and that's good. And then she added L, Town Highway 10, West Street intersection, Town Highway 10, Beaver Pond Road, two-way stop. So that's, that's reiterating what we said in the previous. You know, when you come down Beaver Pond Road, it's a three-way intersection, it's a three-way stop. Now, when you're traveling West Street and intersect Beaver Pond Road, we've already captured those two stop signs, so that was an add. You know, I don't know if you want to keep that in there and let it be two-way stop on West Street, and change the one above it to just eliminate the three-way stop and just have it as a single stop. When you're on Beaver Pond, you hit a stop sign. When you're on West Street, you hit two stop signs, so I don't know what you want to do there. And that's all.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay. All right, and then everyone is in agreement to put up no parking from the stop sign on Park Street to the entrance...
To the school.
To the high school. So if we just put two signs that says no parking, you know how I feel about signs?
Yes, I know.
Just two signs that say no parking?
Between sign.
Or no parking, what if, we could just have a sign that said no parking to corner?
Yeah, here to corner.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make those changes and have it formatted and ready to, for adoption, because it's speak tonight or forever hold your peace. Okay? All right, so I'll format it and have the day... Okay? All right, so I'll format it and have the dates and all that. And just, I wasn't getting excited about stuff like that till we made like major changes cause those are just rinky-dinky. Okay, for the November meeting for adoption. Okay. All right, Board of Water Commissioners, motion will be in order to enter the Board of Water Commissioners at six-twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anything anyone needs to talk about under Board of Water Commissioners? Any concerns, issues? I mean, like, when we start doing the budget, even though we don't do budget for water and wastewater cause those are based on user fees, I do think that we need to look at what the harvest numbers are and allocate funds to, um, when we looked at some of our most egregious, um, accounts so that we know we have the funds in place come spring to, um, put in curb stops or whatever we need to do to stop like these habitual offenders. That is my personal feeling. I mean, I think like last time, like, I think Judy and the ladies downstairs have gotten the numbers down substantially and it's, was an awesome job. And, but my fear is now that we have entered this kind of no pay time, I guess I'll say, because that's what it ends up being, that come springtime, we're gonna be right back to that. And you just, it's just like this vicious cycle of you continually, you know, chasing your tail. And if we have some of these accounts that we know, right now you can't do anything to, so to speak, because you can't turn them off, I think that, you know, pucks on us for not, not fixing that.
Yeah, get those shut offs in.
Yeah.
Have the money.
I think so, I don't know. It's not a decision, that's just my mantra for spiel for tonight.
Since this other board is, when we had those discussions about putting those in.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think it's also important that we stay on top of it and when we start doing, the guys start doing the spring work schedule that we are clear about, you know, having those on that work schedule too. And I know that there were two or three that they said that are, you're gonna have to dig up and maybe someone else is gonna have to come do it, but if we don't address those now and properties roll over, to me, you're just creating the same and those are some of the, um, I don't know. They are habitual and they are some of the bigger spenders or the bigger, I guess, non-spenders. I guess bigger users, so. Um, I would just like to see us while, I mean, I, I, I'm realistic. I know there's lots of things that we could use that force money on, but this is something I think that is an investment that is, that, that helps everyone. Because you have, now have accountability if, if there's curb stops to, to take care, to turn off.
Is the idea to put curb stops in eventually for everybody? Or is it just we're putting curb stops in for the people who we need to shut down?
Well, most everybody should have their own curb stop. Like up in our neighborhood, I think everybody has their own curb stop. I think there are unusual situations, like with duplexes. I think that there are, are some that properties used to go together and now they've been split. Also, we know like on, was it Newton Street?
Yeah.
That probably, my guess is that when they did that, it was such a short street that they just tied everybody into the one. And because you have about this much, you know, between the street and your front yard and the curb stop should be on, you know, your property. So I think that is, you know, and, and that was done, you know, long before any of us.
Yeah, well, right, and Newton Street was probably done before it was in Proctor. Cause Newton Street used to be in Pittsburgh at one time.
Right, and those seem to be, I mean, we had like on, um, Florence Road, there were some. And I think part of that was, um, the length, the distance between some of the properties. So people were tied in rather than having multiples, they just tied them into one. And, and probably for a hundred years or more, it worked wonderfully. But now, um, it doesn't work so well when people don't pay and it's, you know, I will say, it annoys me when I read the town report and people don't pay their water and sewer, you know? It's like, because it's a user-free system. So you're floating money through there from, you know, to keep the system going. And it, even though user fees aren't paying for everything. And the other thing is, we've been responsible with user fees. We have not raised them astronomically, even with all of the improvements and doing the work at the wastewater treatment facility. We have been conscientious of that. And if you raise one, and this is long before I sat in one of these chairs, but even in the past, if you raised water, then you didn't raise wastewater. If you did wastewater the following year, you didn't do water to try to be conscientious about that. And I think if you look at neighboring communities, I know people like to say that our costs are astronomical, but I really don't think they are when you, you know, look at other places. Because even if you have meters, like at home where I grew up, that you have meters and you're, you're paying a base rate no matter what because they're covering their costs. So there's no initial, um, savings, I don't think, with, with meters. Because when you calculate that in, you're gonna calculate or you're gonna have to take in, so you calculate what that base rate is and then you calculate what that, like at home, we pay, I think, per thousand gallons because it's on a ranch, but, um, you know, so, I don't know. That's my spiel about utilities, so.
Yeah, no, we should get those shut offs in and get that off our, off our plate.
Okay. All right, motion will be in order to move into the Board of Sewer Commissioners at six-thirty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, I guess, do you still see the trucks going on down there Jay? She didn't leave a report about the sewage, so I don't know like where we're at on that.
Well, you're seeing them come and go, but it's not several a day.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing any, I mean, you'll, you'll see a couple times a week is all I'm seeing.
So I think they should be done pretty soon.
Because was the first, was the first lagoon five truckloads?
Yeah.
Is that what she told us? So there's not that many that, you know, pull out, so.
No, so I would think-
Two a week, that's all I've seen, yeah.
So I think we would be done pretty soon, so.
That would be nice.
We'll ask for a report for the next meeting. All right, move back into the regular meeting at six-thirty-seven. You have the sheriff's report. Um, any questions on that? No fines this time. Last, last time it was like-
There was one, wasn't there?
Oh, I thought there was just an arrest.
Uh, yes, that's one thing I was gonna bring up because it just, you know, shakes my confidence in, you know, that, uh, report. When, when you look on page eight, it says, you know, tickets issued zero, warnings issued seven, fine total zero, arrests one. And then when you look at page five,
Yeah.
near the bottom, it says traffic stop for headlight. Oh, ticket, one hundred five dollars.
Oh, there you go.
You know, so, you know, when you read that and then you, you don't see it in the total.
Oh, yeah.
Not that it matters because we don't get any of the fine money, but it's just that-
Well, we get some, we get a percentage.
Yeah, percentage, but you would think it would be reflected in the, the grand sum.
Sloppiness, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it seemed like there were a lot of, um-
Warnings.
Warnings and a lot of, uh, I don't know, kinda one-on-one-
Yeah.
Neighborhood issues, I guess, I would say. I don't know. All right, and the manager's report. So everybody has that in their pocket. And, um, so Judy met with Brandon from Zion, the tenants from Fifty-two Main Street Preservation Trust. And they have new property managers hired by Zion. Zion shared updated plans, went through fixes that needed to happen at the property. Um, then they came over here and she met with Brandon, his new partner, and the property manager to discuss the delinquent accounts on Fifty-two Main Street, which are utilities and property taxes and the future of the property. The property manager assured her that the accounts would be caught up. I spoke, um, with the ladies downstairs this morning and there's been nothing received, so. Um, I guess getting caught up is, I don't know, maybe it's, you know, depends. It's open-ended on, on what that means, yeah.
Yeah, and I was just gonna ask on that, with, with the new partner?
Yeah.
You know, have they kept the office downstairs up to date as to what the mailing list is?
Yeah, they have that. So actually, the information, so Judy did, cause it's going to the property managers now that are, uh, the responsible parties that, um, when she met with them. They are the people that are overseeing the accounts payable.
Okay.
So, yeah, but apparently not, right, current, currently, they're just looking at the papers apparently cause we haven't received anything. Um, based on some of the issues we had in the park, the new camera has been installed on the front of the building and Kyle and Judy have it on their phone, as well as you can download it, um, to the desktop here. Uh, Ally Dean has made the repairs at the, to the deck of the skating rink and added railing from the handicap accessible ramp and painted the deck as well. So it should be ready for ice skating. There were some concerns with, um, the big building, Sixty-two Main Street, um, that there were people living in there. And Judy reached out to the state police and hasn't heard back about that or about, um, the crash by the library. What, what was-
Oh, sign.
Yeah, yeah, so. That could be a discussion for another day about, you know, replacing or what we wanna do or put something, if we wanna put something back up there, what we wanna do. Um, at one time, they had talked about changing the signs out and putting, uh, there used to be, um, the green marble signs, that's what used to be, um, there. But changing them out so they didn't say Home of Vermont Marble to kind of update it away from that. So maybe this is the impetus to make us think about doing that and changing that. I mean, not that it's, you know, needs to be done right now, but maybe that's something to, to think about, so.
What was the decision on the location of that? When it was originally-
Why was it placed there?
Right.
I really couldn't tell, I don't know. I, I don't know.
I'm saying it's an odd spot, it's just a-
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, it's kinda-
Well, probably in the beginning, like Albert said, Newton wasn't part of-
Right.
And, yeah, I don't know what, what was the, the reasoning for, for putting it in that spot. And it doesn't, I, doesn't have to go back in that spot. We've had plenty of cars on our lawn because of stuff.
Well, you do a panoramic view when you come around the corner. So if it's just roadside and you're looking forward, you really don't see that. But going around the corner, there it is and you, you'll see it.
Slowing down, just like the one, you're slowing down.
See it coming in.
Supposed to be slowing down.
Yeah.
But usually it's, it's like you say, it's on the edges of town, welcome to Proctor or whatever.
Right, well, yeah, I don't know. Maybe it's only because you're coming up to the only stop sign and we're entering, you know, the-
Maybe, I don't know. I, I don't know, you could look in, I, I don't even know if you'd be able to find why it was like that. I'm guessing that was a Vermont Marble decision. So I'm not really sure that we would have any information that could.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and, and it, you know, doesn't have to go there. I mean, there's not one on West Street, you know? Um, maybe we don't put another one up, maybe we just have that one, I don't know. I mean, maybe people don't miss it. It looks, seems odd to me when I look at my office window, it's not there, but like everything else, you get adjusted to things over time. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, doesn't have to go there. Um-
I'm just curious as to-
Well, the town owns a weird strip of property, see? Um, cause they, you own a little strip of property, prop, I don't even know if you did own where the sign was. But there's a little strip that you own between where the house is and the library because of the, there's a pipe there, so, um, it's a weird thing. So I don't know. It, I mean, maybe we don't need to put another one up, maybe, maybe people, you have the triangle there, we have signs, maybe, you know, maybe that's where you put the sign, in the triangle, I don't know. So at one point, people wanted to have a, like a sign there that you have like in front of schools that you could, um, you know, change the message on, I don't know, like a flashing sign, I guess, I don't know what they're called, so.
It's a little-
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, I don't know if people, I don't know if I lived there, I would love that, I mean.
Right.
I don't love the light at the end of my cul-de-sac because it's right in your house all the time. I feel like Kenny Rogers' Chicken from Seinfeld sometimes.
You see a flashing sign there and that people get distracted trying to read it and there's a crosswalk for all those elementary school kids.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I think it would be probably on the other side if you were gonna do it, you would do it, so, but. I don't know, that's personally, if I was voting, that'd be a no for me cause I wouldn't like that look. But, but it's not up to me, so. And, uh, I mean, it's, and those are things, like, we could always put stuff out, like at town meeting, like if people think we need to put up another sign, if we put up a sign, what should it say? Should it be marble? Those kinds of things, we could do one of those five question surveys and have, when people come to vote or something like that. I mean, it should be what people want to see. Should represent your community the way you see it or whatever, so.
Right, I'm all for that Lisa, because I like public input, or give them the opportunity to, you know, have their input. That's, I think, important. That's what builds community. You know, and if we, you know, don't go to them, well, you're not-
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I'm, I much prefer consensus amongst people than two or three people decide because then you're just constantly defending something and being attacked, you know, so. Okay, um, if you have, like I say, I think next meeting, we're gonna try to kinda maybe start with, um, budgets. So, cause November kinda be done, try to be done by December. Um, so you can have the report together for January. Um, things you should be thinking about though, if there's some kind of dedication for the town report. And then something to put on the town report, so. And those are things that, um, you don't have to have even at the next meeting, just something to think about, so. Um, it is the birthday of the, of the bridge and so there, there's always that, even though I know the bridge has been on several times, but, um, nineteen fifteen was the bridge, so, um, yeah. But if there, the other thing is, if there's some kind of dedication that sometimes takes time to get information together, so if there's something you're thinking about, that's probably, um, sooner rather than later is a good idea for photos and just getting information together, I think, so. Um, anything else? All right, and motion will be in order at six-forty-seven to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.